Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Board Work Session, January 11th, 2021. May I say, everybody, please turn off your cell phones, pagers, electronic devices, and assistive listening devices available for the hearing impaired. I'd like to ask everybody to please rise to the platform.
(inaudible)
Okay. Before we go any further, we received a letter today from Al Backs. Would you like to read that into the record? Al, would you like to read it into the record?
I'd like to.
Okay. It says, "Mr. Speaker, Supervisor, resignation from Town of Lewiston Town Board. Dear Supervisor Robert, please let this letter serve as my formal resignation from the position of Councilman for the Lewiston Town Board effective January 11th, 2021. It has been my honor and privilege to serve the residents of the town. Over the past 15 years, I will afford to be in service in whatever capacity you may deem appropriate in the future. Very truly yours, Alfonso Maro Backs." So, um...
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve the letter as read. Normally, I say with regret, but I know the future holds, so I'll say congratulations.
A second, Mr. Speaker.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, move. Now, I would ask to move to appoint, now we have an opening, we have a gentleman that we've all talked about together, one-on-one, and we all feel that he did an excellent job with the board previously. So, I'd like to move to appoint Rob Morial to fill the remainder of Al Backs' term as Town Councilman.
With pleasure, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Rob, we ask you to step forward. Donna's going to swear. Rob, in.
What's the matter with you, creamy?
(inaudible)
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 I, Rob Morial...
I, Rob Morial.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
Will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of the State of New York...
Constitution of the State of New York.
...and that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And I will well and faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the Town of Lewiston Councilman...
The duties of the Town of Lewiston Councilman.
...in and for the Town of Lewiston...
In and for the Town of Lewiston.
...to the best of my knowledge...
To the best of my knowledge.
...so help me God.
So help me God. (applause) I want to thank the council for letting me trust in you and bringing me back. I really appreciate it. Well, we're here. Please go. Did you bring your sign? Wouldn't that get him to do it? No. Wouldn't that get him to do it? Don't mind us. You know, let me grab my paper. (inaudible) Tom, I'm going to touch base with you real quick then, just a little bit before that. We were also notified earlier last week, shortly before last week's meeting, that Tom Seaman has an opportunity with the Town of Lockport, a full-time attorney job, well, it's not full-time, but 30 hours. And because of that, he's going to be unable to fill the role 100% as the Attorney for the Town of Lewiston. So, what I've moved to do now is I have a resolution here to create a new position for the town, authorization to create the position of Town Attorney. Whereas the Town of Lewiston desired to create the position of Town Attorney, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Lewiston does hereby establish the position of Town Attorney pursuant to Civil Service Guidelines and does hereby further establish an annual salary of $39,000 per said position. And be it further resolved that the Town Attorney is an employee of the Town of Lewiston for all purposes, including purposes of recording of the New York State Attorney System, and be it further resolved that the town supervisor may execute any and all documentation necessary to create such position.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, move. That can be your role, probably. Okay. Now, having said that, I also have a resolution here, a resolution to hire Alfonso Maro Backs as our Town Attorney. Whereas the Town of Lewiston has hereby established the position of Town of Lewiston Attorney pursuant to Civil Service Guidelines, and whereas the annual salary of $300,000 has been set for said position, and whereas the Town Board of the Town of Lewiston does hereby set the term of expiration for said position to be at the end of this year, now therefore be it resolved, Town of Lewiston does hereby appoint Mr. Alfonso Maro Backs as Town of Lewiston Attorney effective January 11th, 2021, and his term expires at the first Town Board meeting in 2022.
A motion?
That's a motion.
Second, with pleasure.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I just want to say there's a great opportunity for Mr. Backs to continue with the Town of Lewiston. He's been here 15 years as a Councilman, and now he gets to move in another direction, and he was all in favor of this opportunity, and I know he appreciates it. So, congratulations. Thank you very much. (applause) Donna needs to swear, Al. (inaudible) 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 I, Alfonso Maro Backs... I, Alfonso Maro Backs... ...do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. ...that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States... That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States. ...the Constitution of the State of New York... The Constitution of the State of New York. ...and that I will well and faithfully discharge... And that I will well and faithfully discharge... ...the duties of the Town of Lewiston Town Attorney... The duties of the Town of Lewiston Town Attorney. ...in and for the Town of Lewiston... In and for the Town of Lewiston. ...to the best of my ability... To the best of my ability. ...so help me God. So help me God. (applause) (inaudible) Hold it up to the way you were doing it for a second. (inaudible) John was holding the light. Hopefully, that way it looks better. John was trying to... Does my smile look like? Yes, it does. Nice and white. (applause) Now, having said that, I'm going to read a letter from Seaman Norris. Dear members of the Board, please be advised that I was recently hired by the Town of Lockport to serve as their Town Attorney. As such, Seaman Norris must reduce the legal services offered to the Town of Lewiston. We respectfully offering to act as independent counsel for the Town of Lewiston's Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Additionally, we will continue servicing the town on issues related to union collective bargaining negotiations, tax assessment of union cases, capital projects, and any other issues we mutually agree to handle as particular issues arise. I have prepared an enclosed revised contract for your review and respectfully request the town approve this contract for meeting on January 11th, 2021. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to continuing to work with the town in the future. Tom Seaman. And I think it's a great opportunity to be able to continue with Seaman Norris in that aspect. So, I would ask for a motion to approve...
Motion to approve the attorney contract as read by the Supervisor for Seaman Norris and the Director of Supervisors assigned set agreed.
With a motion, carry, second.
Second.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And having said all that, now we resume our Town Board Work Session with a public hearing on the Mount St. Mary's Hospital helipad. Donna, would you please, or Carol, would you please read the notice?
Notice a public hearing on the planned unit development detailed plan application for Mount St. Mary's Hospital helipad. Notice is hereby given that the Town Board of the Town of Lewiston will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 11th, 2021, at Town Hall 1375 Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York, at 6:00 PM. Concerned with the application of Mount St. Mary's Hospital and Care Center, 5300 Military Road, Lewiston, New York, for detailed plan approval of the construction of the helipad with modifications to the parking lot area. Said development to be constructed in the area of the existing parking lot. The application, the applicable development is already zoned as a planned unit development with applicants seeking specific modifications thereto. At the public hearing, all interested persons who wish to be heard will be heard.
Hey, has anybody signed up on the sheet back there? Nobody has signed up on the sheet. I would ask anyone to unmute everybody, and I want to put out there if anybody would like to speak on the matter of the Mount St. Mary's helipad. (inaudible) Can you unmute everybody? Okay. Everybody's on mute here. Anybody who wants to speak would have to unmute themselves as well. Okay. One more time. I'm just going to ask one more time. Does anybody wish to speak in regards to Mount St. Mary's helipad? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, man. Nick Roman, let's speak here in the town hall.
Hey, we're Nick Roman, McGavin, McGavin, Grim, on behalf of the applicant at Mount St. Mary's Hospital and Catholic Health System. Just wanted to introduce, accompanying me today is CJ Earlough, the Administrator of Mount St. Mary's Hospital, Janet Falhaber from Catholic Health, and Mark Boyce from Mercy Flight. I want to congratulate the Board for appointing Mr. Morial, Mr. Backs to positions within the town and continue service on the Commender Board for its appointments as a Town Resident, et cetera. We've been through the concept phase, both through the planning board approved here by the Town Board, and the detailed phase of development. You're all familiar with the project. If you have any questions, I'm not sure the Board members have any questions with it, but we're here to answer the questions you may have. This is a benefit to the town, the residents, and the patients at St. Mary's, for sure.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Move to close the public hearing. Second. A motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All in favor of opposed. Thank you very much.
Steve, how do we know if we're off on the unit?
Well, you have the red check. So, you have a red microphone next to you, and so at the bottom, you know, at the bottom of your... So, touch the bottom of your... The bottom of your right hand. Go the other way.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Okay, moving on to the agenda approval. Does anybody need to add anything to the agenda?
Well, our Recreation Director had a list of items that they were supposed to purchase to rebuild, and it did not.
Yeah, I spoke to him today. We're going to put that on, so there's a process that we're going to have to follow. So, I talked to him over today. It'll be an email, so yeah, we're going to do that tonight. Anybody else need to add anything to the agenda?
Does Steve, does Dave Train have his items on here?
We can handle it, pardon. Okay. Move to approve.
Move for approval as presented?
Second.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Abstract approval.
I've reviewed the abstract. I move for approval of the regular abstract of claims number 20-01910 to 20-02010 and 21-00001 to 21-00017, and recommend the amount of $408,713.82 plus the post audit of $939.27.
Second. With a motion of second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes, we do not have the final audit right at the Town Board meeting, but we do have our reorganization minutes.
Move for approval as presented?
Second.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Upstake.
Okay. With one abstention. Also, under old business, we approved a mileage rate, and we need to amend it. We approved it at 57.5 cents, and it's actually at 56 cents per mile.
Move for approval, the bill rate of 57 cents per mile?
56. 56.
I'm sorry?
56.
56. As were amended by federal government.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And we already took care of appointing the attorney for the town. Move to some departmental concerns. I know Chief, I'll go to you first. I know you had, you talked earlier.
Yes, you have a list of committee members, potential committee members for the Board to approve for an ad hoc committee for police reform, and we'll be scheduling meetings this week.
Do you want to mention who's going to be on that committee?
Yes. The committee that we discussed will be, consist of... You want it by name or title?
Either or.
The Town Supervisor, Town Attorney, myself, Police Chief, both the superintendents from Niagara Wheatfield and for Lewiston Porter School, the village representatives, the mayor, and the Councilman Vic Ite.
Trustee.
Trustee, I'm sorry. Thank you. Jennifer Polly from the Chamber of Commerce, and James Bissell as a representative for the Tuscaloosa Nation.
Just for clarification, when we refer to Town Attorney, that is Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman is the Attorney for the Town.
Correct. Go ahead.
Did you mention me?
Mr. Jacoby as well. (laughing) Yeah. Councilman Jacoby, not trustee.
I don't want to be ignored. I'll stay away from my family.
No, please come with us.
Did we actually approve the committee? Make a motion to approve it?
What you should do is make a motion to create the committee...
Okay.
...as an ad hoc committee...
Okay.
...for the purpose solely of investigating the police reform as outlined in Governor's Executive Order requiring the same.
That's Executive Order 203.
Executive Order 203. That committee would serve just until the end of their job. And it would come to a conclusion at the end of...
When the town adopts the plan.
...the town adopts the plan.
Okay. Can I give that motion?
So, move to create said ad hoc committee.
Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Do we have to unmute?
Well, I believe after that meeting, we'll come back and make it more formal on who's going to be on it, or should we approve unanimously the individuals now?
You know, truthfully, it's up to the... Sorry. It's up to the Board how you want to run it. What I would recommend for your Board is to go ahead and approve the initial committee as constructed by your Chief of Police, and then let the committee run from there. They have, you know, there's plenty of paperwork from the state as to what is expected of them, and I would put that committee together. Obviously, there are distinguished people in our community, and I would let that committee run.
Okay. I'll make that form in motion. So, members of that Lewiston Police Reform Ad hoc Committee will be Supervisor Speaker Robert, Newport Superintendent Paul Tesari, Niagara Wheatfield Superintendent Daniel Lalnovich, Jennifer Polly from Lewiston Chamber, Lower River Region Chamber of Commerce, Chief Frank Prebet, Town Attorney Al Backs, John Jacoby, Councilman, Mayor Ann Welch, Trustee Vic Ite, and James Bissell from the Tuscaloosa Nation. Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And our first meeting will be closed. Let's go to Dave Train, Highway Superintendent.
Yes, I'm looking for approval to run an excavator from Belining Construction. And funny is, I believe you have three bids. There are a low bid. It'll be a month, a month's rental, as long as, as soon as projects can start. I'll go to the Town Engineer, and this will be for the River Road project.
Okay. All right. There is $7,800 a month.
So, move to approve the price of $7,800 per month for the excavator for the purpose of doing the River Road part.
Second. With a motion of second. Actually, there's a delivery and a pickup charge too, right?
Yeah, that's, right now, we're looking to see if I can pick it up or deliver it, if our trailer awake, the weight limits on our trailer are okay. If not, Wheatfield may be able to. If not, then we'll have to purchase it, and they're still open.
Right. So, let's approve it at $8,300. Just because we don't have to come back for delivery and pickup.
I accept that amendment.
Okay. You wanted the second round?
Second.
Okay, with a motion of second for $8,300 for Belining's equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Go ahead. When are you going to start?
Bob Lanin, they had it marked out, and now I'm just waiting for him to give me approval. Once Engineer says go, we're, they're prepared to deliver. I spoke to him today. The motion is carried. And then next is, we're looking for a lift to service the police cars and parks and some of the highway vehicles. We called and found out the price of $21,325 for a brand-new $15 pound lift. And then we found a used one that we could purchase for $7,500, along with $1,700 to remove it and install it in the highway garage. I haven't been able to find any other used lifts to compare it to or for any other bid, so under a miniscule thing, I'd like to purchase it for $9,200 from the Ransfield Bus Lines. They went out of business, and they're selling out all their equipment.
So, this is an opportunity that you can't pass up.
It's less than half price. I spoke to the company. The company's told, even told us they expected it. It's fine. It's good to go. It's been used like that a dozen times at the most.
Is that a pretty high capacity?
Yes.
Who's going to install it? They, who does that?
We got Flightman Service.
Flightman Service.
The same company that sells the new one.
Move for approval as presented?
So... Hold on, I have a question here. Go ahead. Time in and out to look at this.
Yeah, it's far, it's a little bit, it's a little bit unusual in terms of your procurement policy, because there's, as Dave said, there's really no other used lifts like this around that he can price them out to compare them to. So, what we had Dave do was compare it to new, and it's significantly less than what it's over half of, you know, over a 50% reduction to buy this new one. He's looked into it. It's been used very little. And so, this is really the only one. So, it's really a sole source opportunity. So, you should do a resolution that this is the sole source for this particular lift in its used condition. Do that resolution, and then combine that with a resolution to approve the purchase. I'll also note that because they're installing it, it's a public works contract, so it'll have the Town of Lewiston's public works contract attached to it, which we can prepare.
Okay.
You can do it all in one motion, as, you know, as presented, that it's a sole source opportunity, and approve the Highway Superintendent to purchase it.
Okay. Can I hear your motion?
So, move as Al stated.
With a motion of second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And that's all. Thank you very much. Thanks. No problem. Anything from the attorneys?
No, I don't have anything of this, no.
Okay. Let's go to Jeff Ritter.
Before you go, what department would that fall in?
For third... Jeff Ritter, are you a little unmuted yourself? Okay, thank you very much. Tim Masters? Tim, I wanted to ask you real quick. I know you've worked hard on the St. Mary's. You've worked right-hand in hand with St. Mary's. Do you have any input on anything with the St. Mary's Tower, for the St. Mary's helipad?
(inaudible) But didn't you, in the past, didn't you talk to the hospital about that, and they were looking into ways to solve that?
Okay. Bob Lanin, are you there?
I'm there.
Okay, thank you very much. Phil Conrad?
I'm ready.
Okay. Jackie?
Move for approval as presented, as provided to us on January 11th, 2020, our divisions one through eight, one through 20.
Second. With a motion of second. Yeah, we'll do accept it, Jack. So, with a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Make sure you should accept the budget change for the revisions presented by Budget Director for 2021 budget of $5,000.
Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else, Jackie? Carry your motion.
Move for approval as presented. Move for approval as presented.
Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? I don't abstain from that. Okay. More or less abstain. Anything else, Jackie?
Mike Dashino?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have anything for the board?
I, I just want, I just want to make sure that, uh, I'm, I'm, obviously, I've been a guy, everything's, I'm not sure if the board is, I'm not sure if it's, uh, I don't know, I think people can, more.
Hey, Al, Tom, what's your recommendations there?
I couldn't hear him too, either. What did he say his proceeding was?
So we've been kind of moratorium on our recreation programs last year with COVID. He wants to move forward, trying to plan his two thousand twenty-one programs. Does he need a motion from the board to allow him to do that?
If it's just in the planning stage, I would say you, you don't need any motion at this point. I mean, you can, you know, Mr. Dashino could certainly go ahead and plan it. If you guys are to a point where you're going to convene children playing or other rec opportunities, you're going to want to lift that, lift that moratorium that you put on recreation programs.
Okay.
Planning, certainly plan.
Okay. Did you copy that, Mike?
Yeah, I would go ahead and move forward then. I mean, if the, if the state mandates that we close it, we'll close it. If we're allowed, I say we run the program. I think the town.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, we move forward. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yeah.
I would just, I would, I would like to kind of go back to that prior moratorium to find out whether it specifically says the timeline as far as the, the data of, of the program that we were considering.
Okay.
Mr. Seaman seems to think that it's a, it's just a blanket moratorium on the, on the program, which I don't recall.
Okay. And then we can address it, the planning board, or the, the, the coordinating, but he can obviously, by all his planning.
Right.
Start with that. Thank you. Um, let's see if, if that's.
Yeah.
So moving forward, uh, under Supervisor Broderick, we have the Mount St. Mary's helipad application for construction of a helipad. So I guess what I would like to do, I know CJ from the hospital's here. Tim Masters raised a question. I know you guys were made aware of it. Has, has anything been planned in regards to the parking?
Well, we'd like to know, again, also, there's going to be six hundred and ninety-six parking spaces.
Move forward, so they can pop up the camera.
Yeah. Speak up as best you can.
Certainly. The reconfiguration is going to be six hundred and ninety-six parking spaces, which is the, which meets the minimum requirement for the, the hospital, including physicians, including patients, employees, as well as the daycare. So there's going to be approximately, like eighty spaces lost through construction. We're also adding additional spaces. So we had, we were in the, I guess, the plus side. We had excess number of spaces. And so the reconfiguration with the restriping will provide the minimum required spaces under state law.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Connor, thing, the, the code calculations for the number, required number of spaces is included in the construction documents as well as count the count of spaces that will be provided once the helipads go. And we now, we need the total minimum, the construction necessary spaces that we need.
Has there been any questions?
Does that satisfy Tim Masters?
Uh, uh, Tim Bell. Tim, are you there?
I'm there. The, the, the code, the code is very outdated and is not included with two thousand twenty, which is why I'm saying, I think they're going to have some issues with it. Every time I go up there, there aren't a lot of school. This school sometime even aren't going to hold restrictions. So if they think it's more of that, the larger spaces in there, my suggestion would be, yes, if they take over, I think they should do more.
Okay, thank you, Tim. So I guess what I would say is, uh, if it becomes a problem, do you plan addressing parking up there?
There's some availability, I believe, on the west side to increase parking if, if was necessary. And we'll do whatever we can to comply with the state code.
It's my understanding that people do use that parking lot to leave a car, get in a carpool to go to Buffalo, heading it south. You may want to keep an eye on who's using the parking lot.
Thank you, Councilman Guy. We'll certainly take what the.
You obviously know what Bill does.
I'll give you his plate number later.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I guess first we need a resolution for the.
Negative declaration. Move to declare a negative declaration on the town resolution for the helicopter pad.
And just to be clear, you're, I've submitted those written resolutions to you already. So your motion would be to approve the, the resolution as written with regard to the negative declaration.
Second.
With a motion of, and a second. Any questions?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Just Supervisor, I'm abstaining. Okay. Thank you. Very nice. Well, we got one more to go.
Yeah, it approved, Jim.
Yeah, yeah. One more to go. So we need to, you want to.
Say, move for approval as presented, the written document prepared by Tom Seaman?
For planning and development, detailed plan approval of Mount St. Mary's Hospital Helipad.
Second.
With a motion of second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And I'm abstaining again on that. Okay. Motion carries.
When do we anticipate the replacement ground movement?
Oh, it'll go off the bid. If not, if it's approved, we'll put it off the bid. So we would expect to begin as soon as weather allows in the spring.
Good luck with it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good bill.
Yeah. Take care.
Take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the Association of Towns, their annual conference, which is usually held in February in New York City, but not this year. So they're holding it virtually. So they, what they need us to do is to select a delegate and an alternate delegate. So I would ask that, make a motion, please, to select myself as the delegate.
I did, I've done before this. I'll be, I'll voluntarily be the alternate.
Okay. So.
This is John's train in New York, still staged.
Yeah, this is John's train to New York. Do you want to make that motion?
Yes, I make the motion to have the delegate and the alternate be Steve and Bill Gattan.
With a motion, I, take a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
And after you've dragged them over, if you have any input, please feel free to provide it to us.
Okay. I have a roster addition for Upper Mountain Fire Company. Please add the following individual to our rolls. This is a new member of the Upper Mountain Fire Company, Lewis, New York, effective January second, actually, twenty twenty-one. The retroactive would be Raymond Oliphant from Seven Hundred Mountain View Drive, Lewis, New York.
So move.
Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I mean, we have a New York State Liquor Authority notice from Tekla LLC, which is fifty-eight ninety-four Ward Road in Sanborn. We don't make a motion. It's just them notifying us that they applied for a liquor license.
Recision filed.
Recision filed accordingly. Thank you. And then I will read for Councilman Bax, from Jeff Ritter, Supervisor Broderick, and town board members, I would like to notify you that I'm, actually, this isn't from Jeff Ritter, it's from Jeffrey Van Uden to Jeff Ritter. I'd like to notify you that I'm retiring from my position in outside sewer at the Water Pollution Control Center. My last day of employment at the town of Lewiston will be January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. While I look forward to this new chapter in my life, I will miss many of the town employees with whom I have had the privilege to know and work with for the past twenty-two years. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to have been a part of the town family. Best regards, Jeffrey Van Uden.
Move for approval with regret and congratulations on his retirement?
Second. With a motion of second. Pardon, Jeff?
He's a very hard to replace.
Yes. Yes. So we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. He can retire, Jeff. You know what? I'm sorry. Is Melinda Oliphant on the line? I don't see her.
She said she was going to zoom in.
Man, she may have trouble walking in. I, it's okay. I have, okay, sorry about that. I didn't, I didn't see your name. I forgot about you, Melinda. I apologize. So. Oh, okay. So go, go ahead. Councilman Gattan?
We have a letter from the coordinator of Lewiston Senior Center recommending approval of hiring Raymond London as van driver for the Lewiston Senior Center at the rate of twelve fifty per hour. Melinda, when's it starting to be?
Uh, September eleventh, if it's a call, and then it starts.
Soon as possible.
Well.
Effective tomorrow.
January twelfth.
That's a motion for approval?
Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
A bid from Auctions International, who would like to buy the two thousand four Chevy Melbourne Classic at a price of six hundred and thirty dollars. I recommend accepting that bid.
Second. With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And before you go on, Bill, Melinda, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you have anything to add under department heads that passed your by? Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
No, that's, that's fine. This is a, a, if anything bad ever, limited down, uh, at the time of June twenty-five, I also have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that, and that's according basically to the yellow zone of restrictions, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
I talked to Melinda today that, from what I understand, to apply for the vaccine for people over seventy-five has to be done online.
Yes.
And I asked Melinda if she could, she and her staff could assist some of the people who may have difficulty getting it online.
Okay. Just park it, Mountain Nation. Go ahead. You have a muddy Niagara?
I don't think people have to park next to them.
Are you aware of the muddy Niagara?
Yes.
All right. Do you have any concerns?
No. Pretty standard. Same thing every year. His plan, I think it's actually probably going to be a little smaller, or scaled down. So we have no issues with it.
Move for approval?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Gattan. Councilman Jacoby?
Uh, just one little thing. We've canceled our historic reservation, really because of the COVID. It's, it's, we've been holding meetings, but, you know, but it's just too, too.
Right.
Risky. I'm, I'm like, one of the younger people on there. I'm pretty old.
No comment there, but yeah, I definitely think it's, it's a wise move.
Yeah. And that's all I got.
Okay. We already took care of budget revisions. Councilman Myers, anything?
No, it's not.
Okay. And Councilman Morell, would you like to add anything?
No, I don't have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight.
He ready?
I have one, thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
Before you're done, I want to remind you, you appointed Mr. Bax to, to several different committees and things along those lines. So you may want to revisit that year now and assign any councilmen to all of those positions, or revisit it and reshuffle it in the future, but don't forget about him.
Yeah, no. Okay, so the one liaison, Councilman Jacoby wishes to replace Mr. Bax as, as the liaison for the police department. So I ask for, I'll make the motion to, to have John Jacoby be liaison for the police department.
Second.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, may the rest of the council members look over what hell has been doing?
Well, what I was going to say for now, so it doesn't sit with no, without a liaison, I would say we'll appoint Rob to any other liaison position that El, that we, that El Bax is in, and then we can revisit it in the next couple of weeks.
I understand.
So just a motion, I'll, I'll make the motion to have Rob Morell fill in for El Bax as the liaison for, everything that was pointed to and to be reconsidered.
Second.
With a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And if anybody has one that they would, you know, thought they maybe want to swap or take over, you know.
Mix and match?
Yeah. So, good. Resilience statements. Is there anybody that would like to speak on slide? Amy Smith, I'd ask you again to unmute everyone, and anybody that would like to speak, I would cast them there. Speak out there. That's it. Okay. And with that, I'll make some announcements. The town offices will be closed Monday, January eighteenth, in observance of Mark Luther King Junior Day. Our upcoming boards, commission meetings. We have the environmental commission meeting that was canceled for January twelfth. We'll become the environmental commission. Planning boards, January fourteenth at six thirty PM. And a public hearing, regular town board meeting is January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Make a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, thank you, everybody. Sorry about the technical delay earlier.